Good morning and welcome to our April meeting of the Chesterfield County Council. It's 9:00 AM, so I called this meeting to order. Mr. Conklin will not be with us today. He recently had surgery and I'm sure we all wish him a speedy recovery. At this time, I'll call on Councilman Rivers for our opening prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you pray with us, please?
Lord, we pause now to give you thanks for this beautiful day. Thank you for the opportunity we have together, together as elected officials, to discuss the business before us this day. Lord, as we move through this agenda, we ask that you would be with us as we make the decisions that affect all of our citizens of Chesterfield County. Help us that we might make the right decisions that will be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Well, we thank you for all our county employees and for the job that they do. We thank you for our law enforcement. We ask that you continue to keep them safe, Lord. Thank you for our volunteers that provide the services to our citizens. Be with us this morning as we move through this work session. Forgive us of our shortcomings, all these things we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Rivers. There is a need to amend the agenda. I'll turn that over to Mr. Ruffler.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 10A, which was Project PAC, Special Source Credit Agreement Ordinance, that's going to be, need to be stricken and postponed to a later date.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
No.
Mr. Miller, Ms. Burns, thank you very much. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we would like to recognize some of our dedicated employees for their years of service. Kim and Ms. Terry, would you do the honors, please?
Morning.
Morning.
We're watching our fallen employees. We have Donald Polley, what called it once for five years. Jerry Stain, community center for five years. Chad Abraham, management for 10 years. Ernest Ishmael, Public Buildings for 10 years. Becky Harris, registered living for 15 years. Joseph Carnes, Sheriff's Department for 15 years. Carolina Tyler, Sheriff's Department for 15 years. Vanessa Bluer, private four, 20 years. Ford Elevick, with the detention center for 20 years. Anthony Wayne Norman, Sheriff's Department for 20 years. Mary Flora Watson, Sheriff's Department for 20 years.
Once again, thank you all for your service. At this time, I assume everyone has reviewed the minutes of our last meeting. If there are no corrections or deletions, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Ethan, Mr. Smallwood. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Eubanks, I think you've got the bonds that are going around. We'll move down to appointments. Joseph Lewis, PD Councilwoman. Come on up, Mr. Lewis. Glad to have you, Will, today.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me come to speak with y'all for just a little bit. I also wanted to introduce Ms. Dusty Curtis. She is new to the Grants and Planning Office at the COG. She joined us late last year at the COG. And since she's new to our department, she's been visiting different meetings and lectures and just anything that she can accompany any of us, Kim and Lindsay and me, to just learn about grants and planning. So she's just here with me observing from the COG as well. So I was invited by Ms. Mary Anderson to come speak with y'all about something that has come to my attention. And some of y'all may be much more familiar with this than I am, but I'm just gonna just present some things that I've learned and found out. So what I'm talking about is the rail bed that is between Sheraw and Society Hill. Ultimately, it goes down to Floyd at the Nucor Steel Plant in Darlington County. But several weeks ago, probably, gosh, close to two months ago now, I've found out about this rail bed. I was looking at some rail trail ideas around our region. And of course Florence's rail trail is pretty well-known. That might be the only one of that size that I can think of off the top of my head. But I found out about this line and I also found out, I called Rob Wolf over in Towne, Sheraw, and he told me the story that maybe some of y'all know more than I do, but about 12 years ago, there was a citizens group that wanted to turn this rail bed into a rail trail. He said that the effort eventually died out. They ran into three obstacles. One, who would maintain the trail? Two, the railroad wanted a million dollars for the acquisition of the rail bed. And three, there were some folks in a neighborhood in cash that didn't favor it. And I'm not sure why they didn't favor it, and Rob didn't know either at the time. But that was about 12 years ago. Also, the rail bed itself was under the process of going out of service at that time, about 12 years ago. So we're talking about 11 or 12 years ago, it passed out of service. I contacted the railroad, which is South Carolina Central Railroad, and it is out of use, out of, is not active. The entirety of the rail bed that is in Chesterfield County is owned by that railroad and no one else. And they do not have any plans to do anything with it. So that's what the railroad told me. The railroad that Florence's rail trail came, if you know anything about that, it runs from Sumter. It ultimately runs all the way to Wadfle, North Carolina. But anyways, Florence County wanted to do a trail between all their county parks. So between Timminsville and Florence, they were looking at hooking up to the rail trail. Well, turns out the CSX property had been out of use for so long that it had reverted back to the original owners. So instead of working with just CSX, Florence County was gonna have to work with about 1,000 landowners. And that's just about killed it, basically. I mean, that's pretty tough. So when I found out that this was all under one owner, I thought, okay, well, maybe this could happen. I called Ms. Mary Anderson a week or two ago, I can't remember when that was, about the Transportation Alternatives Program under the South Carolina Department of Transportation. I don't know how familiar everybody is with that. But basically, they put a lot more money into this program over recent years, and they are looking at funding bicycle pedestrian infrastructure, bike pad infrastructure. The rail trail idea is a little bit thorny, and I was speaking last week about possibly putting in a pre-application for this month. I was in Columbia last week. Lindsay and I were just there last week on Thursday. We're not gonna be able to do that for this month. That's the bad news. The issue is that I spoke to DOT. It is a viable project to submit to the TAP program, Transportation Alternatives Program, for the construction, for the construction portion of that. They said you would need to acquire it before coming to us for construction. I was talking about putting in money for the acquiring of that property. But they said, we don't, basically, without saying, they said, we don't deal with railroads, we don't want to deal with railroads, you're gonna have to figure that out on your own. So the short of it is that I think this project would be, if the county is interested in it, and Towne, Sheraw has expressed some interest, I think it would be an amazing opportunity for the county if it could possibly be pursued. It would be about 14 miles in Chesterfield County. It would be about 14 miles between Sheraw and Society Hill. If Darlington County and Society Hill were willing to extend it, that would extend it to Nucor Steel Plant, which is one of the largest employers in Darlington County. And then, of course, Sheraw has 10 of the top 20 employers in Chesterfield County. I think it would be a great draw because it grows, goes right next to the river between two historic towns that are attractive and welcoming to people and give great, people a great opportunity for access to employment and recreation. If Chesterfield County is interested in this at all, what I would suggest, and this is the number one step that would need to be taken next, to speak to the railroad, and this is what DOT told me, you'd have to speak to the railroad. It's been 12 years. I have no idea what they would want now. If they want some kind of millions of dollars still for an out-of-use rail bed or for a 14-mile segment, I would say that would be unlikely to happen. And that would be kind of ridiculous, in my opinion, that they would want millions of dollars. But if they're willing, you know, if they're wanting something lower, if they're willing to work with the county, there are a few sources that I was pointed to for acquisition, funding for acquisition. We're not talking millions of dollars funding for acquisition. We're talking more in the $100,000 to $400,000, between the two sources I was pointed to. Parks, Rec and Tourism with the state, they can, they can give some type of funds for acquisition. But anyways, if the county is interested in this, I have a contact at the railroad I can point you to that I've already spoken to. That would be the next step. If the railroad gives any kind of favorable response of, yeah, we'd be interested in selling and maybe we can kind of negotiate with you, or we're, well, we'd like to hear about this recreation project, the next step for the county would be maintenance. Is the county, who's gonna maintain it? Is the county willing to maintain it? The Towne, Sheraw maintaining, Towne of Society Hill, that sort of thing? Maintenance would be the next question because it would be with, with the understanding that if we get grant funding for the acquisition and the construction, what is maintenance gonna look like? And of course, you're thinking, the next question is, well, how much money does it cost to maintain a trail? It varies. That's the question. It varies widely with the material the trail is made of, the weather, the terrain. It widely varies. I've looked at documents for the rail trail website and they, it's a very wide variable. So, bad news, we're not gonna be able to put in for this April, for this month. But TAP is funding through 2026. They're doing two rounds a year, April and October. If there's any way we can talk to the railroad, if y'all are interested in it, and we get something on paper from the railroad about acquisition, that's what DOT told me, then we can shoot for TAP. The good thing about TAP is they want to fund big projects. They're looking for big money. Minimum you can put in for TAP is half a million dollars, minimum. The maximum you can ask for is the total amount of money they have in the program. And they're funding for small rural areas, pop, property, property, population less than 5,000, and then between 5,000 and 50,000. They're making special categories for those. So anyways, sorry I'm rambling a bit, but any questions? Did I miss anything?
Mr. Lewis, thank you for coming and presenting that to us. I'll refer this to the proper committee and we'll follow up on it.
Thank you very much.
Joseph is working on our comprehensive plan. So while he is working on the comprehensive plan, that's when he came across this TAP opportunity. So he called me because he was excited about the TAP opportunity because it is really big bucks. And we do have to see if, what our buy-in would be, if we had a buy-in, if we could get grant money. You know, there, we would have to have some skin in the game, but it might be proportionally favorable for us to at least pursue it and check into it. So that's why I wanted him to come.
On a less formal note, I have to say that working on the comprehensive plan, looking at the population element and how people are leaving the county, Ms. Mary Anderson, I'd mentioned how someone had said to her that very day, you know, opportunities for recreation. Two years ago, before I took this job, I was living in Fort Worth, Texas. They have a 70-mile trail next to the Trinity River, goes between Fort Worth and Dallas. You can get on that trail and go for days and days if you want. And I was on that trail not every single day, but three, four, five days a week. I would almost move back to Fort Worth just for that trail. Really big deal. And everyone else that I knew, yeah, that was a big deal, so.
Interestingly, there's an article in the Post and Courier about making sure that we're making opportunities available for people who are moving here because whether we want, you know, growth to happen or not, it's coming. And it was ironic that I had a real estate client drive from Minnesota to look at a property, make an offer on the property and say, I just don't see bike lanes. And then Joseph called me that night. I think this is a message, so.
I think it's ironic that people, sometimes I think we see this type of infrastructure as just kind of like a cute ornament, like, oh, that's nice. But it really, it really has become a really big deal. I mean, a lot of people really like this type of thing. Anyways, so.
Ms. Anderson, I appreciate you, Everest, but I think, my opinion, that economic development ought to be included in this project.
Absolutely, sure. Yeah, and that was the point. Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear about that.
Sorry, thank you.
Joseph already called me about it and we discussed it, so he let us know about it.
Okay, thank you.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Appreciate you coming.
Thanks, I'll do it.
Next point, Mr. Johnny McLendon, Reverend McLendon. I don't see him. Next is Ms. Stacy Short with the PD Coalition. Come on up, Ms. Short.
Good morning, council members. First, I would like to say thank you for allowing me to come and speak this morning. I would like to introduce a few people. We have with us our longstanding board member, Ms. Betty Barrett.
She needs no introduction.
And then I have my team member, Ms. Ethel Moore. If she will come, if you don't mind her approaching the council to give out some material for April. We're here this morning first to thank you for your continued support with helping us to combat DV and sexual assault and child abuse here in Chesterfield County. April is Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we just come to bring some awareness and also to help the community to learn ways to prevent that. One of the things that was alarming, as I continue to do my research, the abuse and incest network, at every 107 seconds, there is an American that is being sexually assaulted. Now, those numbers are alarming. They're not all so alarming, but we have 80% of our people that are being abused, are being abused by someone that they know. So it's a perpetrator that they know. And most of them are women. 80% of our violations are done on women. And we will never know the true extent for men because men don't report. And so we gotta change the trajectory of these numbers, and we may say, well, that's worldwide. But just here in Chesterfield County, the numbers are alarming. For last year, for Chesterfield, just for the ones who walked through our crisis center, we served 33 victims of sexual assault. And those just are the ones that walk through our doors. So we know that the numbers are greater and higher than that. For our children, we have a Durant Center in several locations, and they primarily work with the children. It's a child advocacy center. And we had 186 children that were sexually abused in Chesterfield County that received services through our child advocacy centers. Those are, numbers are alarming, alarming. So what can we do? We can have those conversations way beyond just April, where we're focusing on this month about talking about it. Have those conversations for our gentlemen. I think from the standpoint of gentlemen, have those conversations with other young men, letting them know that when a woman says no, consent means no. Without consent, that means that you don't go any further. We have our young ladies to take precautions. We offer what we call a RAD class, which is a rape aggression defense class. It's offered free to the community. I am a certified trainer. We often tell ladies of all ages, take that course because it learns you how to use your body as a weapon. So we offer it for church groups, we offer it for the community at a large. All we have to do is just be notified, do a registration so we can know how many people are in attending, and we will be happy. That is a resource that we offer free to the community. So we just want everyone to just continue to just educate. Some of the events that we're doing throughout this month of April, next Tuesday, which is April 11th, we're doing a senior talk on sexual assault with our seniors at the community center in Sheraw. And we're gonna make it fun and interacting. They usually do bingo on their meeting groups, so we're doing a bingo that focuses on sexual assault, gives them some numbers and some statistics, and so we're gonna make it fun and interacting. We're also doing, on next Wednesday, inside the family courtroom, it's called Cup of Prevention. So we're gonna try to give out donuts and coffee, and we're gonna give out literature about child abuse and prevention, just so that the community can be aware and kind of ask some questions. Do you know, do you realize that within this county? We're gonna do a paint night for some of the victims that we have currently served. Your Body, Your Choice is what our theme is this year, and we're gonna do some paint. That's very therapeutic, and every time we do it, our victims really love to do that. Another thing we do, and thanks to our sheriff, Sheriff Streeter, we're going to do a training with our law enforcement, and we're gonna, we'll work very closely with them. So we're going to do a training that really talk about when we're working with victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. They're coming from a law enforcement standpoint, but we are seeing these victims as they come in. So we thank him for allowing us, I think it's been mandated that all of the on patrol officers come to that training. So we're gonna do that training on the 27th of this month, and then it's gonna extend into May, the second half of that. And then we're doing a candlelight visual on the 20th of this month, outside the front lawn of the courthouse, in collaboration with Guardian Matt Lytham, in reference to child abuse. And I believe our sheriff is going to speak at that. But that's just some of the things that we're gonna be doing throughout this month, just to bring awareness about sexual assault and child abuse awareness. And we just thank you for allowing us to come and speak and just share some information and for your continued support. Are there any questions for me at this time?
I would just like to say that we all appreciate what you and your staff do to try to protect some of the most vulnerable people in our society.
Thank you so much. And thank you.
At this time, we need a motion to accept this proclamation. Mr. Curtis, Mr. Ford, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Before we ask for public comments, while we welcome all comments, public comments should be limited to four minutes per speaker. Is there anyone here that, from the public, that wishes to address council? Okay, hearing none. We have no public hearings today, so item number 10, that is what we have already spat from the agenda, is that correct? Okay, we're going to item 10B, Walmart Fee and Lew Ordinance Agreement or Amendment, first reading. Is there a motion?
No.
Mr. Rivers, Mr. Miller, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item 10C, Road Maintenance Fee Ordinance, first reading. Is there a motion?
No.
Mr. Rivers? Mr. Curtis, have motion and a second. Is any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10D, the 2324 Cash Rural Fire Department Budget Ordinance, first reading by title only. Ms. Burns?
Second.
Ms. Anderson, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10E, the 2324 Harris Creek Rural Fire Department Budget Ordinance, first reading by title only.
So moved.
Mr. Curtis, Ms. Burns, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The 2324 Alligator Rural Fire Department Budget Only Ordinance, first reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Burns, Mr. Curtis, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The 2324 General Fund Budget Ordinance, first reading by title only. Ms. Burns, Mr. Smallwood, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move down to item 10H, the Geo Bond Ordinance, first reading by title only.
So moved.
Ms. Anderson?
Second.
Mr. Curtis, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10I, Resolution Approving the Statewide Mutual Aid Agreement for Emergency and Disaster Response and Recovery. It's a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Rivers, Mr. Miller, are there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Fair Housing Resolution, item 10J, as is required by the Department of Commerce.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Curtis, Ms. Burns, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10K, the Community Block Grant Program of the South Carolina Department of Commerce Resolution. Mr. Smallwood?
Second.
Ms. Burns? Any discussion? Ms. Burns, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Standing Committee Reports from the Finance Committee, Ms. Burns?
The Finance Committee met on March thirteenth and discussed commissioning of a portrait for the former resident circuit judge, C. Anthony Tony Harris. The committee voted unanimously to present to full counsel their recommendations to have a portrait of former resident circuit judge, C. Anthony Harris, painted and placed in the main courtroom of the Judicial Center. We have requested bids to find someone to do this at the most economical price. And that's where we are, so we're waiting on those bids to come in.
Okay, so, we don't, since we don't have motion, I mean, we don't have the bids, can we go ahead and make this motion? Is there a motion to accept the Finance Committee's report?
Do we need a motion?
We don't have any prices.
The only thing Ms. Burns has said is that we are gathering information at this point. We really don't have anything to put out there in front of you. So I mean, if you think a motion is due to continue, I'd be more than glad to make the motion.
But I don't think it would hurt.
Okay, that's no problem. I'll make the motion.
And Mr. Curtis made a motion, is there a second?
I'm not sure what the motion is, to continue just holding on to information till we have more?
Correct. Move forward.
Mr. Smallwood's a second, is any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
This is, this is just about moving forward to get pricing, this is not...
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll move down to the Road Committee, Mr. Miller?
Ms. Jermaine Johnson, that come for the Road Committee on a subdivision they have in Pageville. And at this time, I turn it over to Mr. Hugh Banks.
Okay. Mr. Johnson came before the Road Committee a couple weeks ago requesting, he's putting in a subdivision in the, on the western end in the Pageville area. He, the entrance to his subdivision was fifty feet on each side, with two entrances there, fifty feet on each entrance. His request was to, our ordinance calls for a sixty-six-foot right-of-way. He, he's requesting or asking for a variance to go back from a sixty-six-foot right-of-way to a fifty-foot right-of-way. And in doing so, what that will do will eliminate the ditch lines in the road, on the edge of the roads. We call it a valley gutter road, we'll be putting in. Me personally, coming from the Road Department, I do not have a problem with valley gutter. One thing for a positive with the Road Department that it does for us is it eliminates all the pipes in the driveways in this subdivision. That goes back to maintenance. So by doing this, it eliminates a lot of maintenance for each of the driveways in that subdivision. I do not have, the only stipulations I would like the council to put on this is that in doing so, if y'all will allow him to, this variance to go to fifty feet, in doing so, that he and his engineer work along beside PD Cog's engineer, Ms. Sandy Watford, who is our, I use her as a backup to get, make sure that we get a good road in. And that's the only stipulations I would like to put. I do not have a problem with going down to fifty-foot during a valley gutter road, provided he will work with the engineer from PD Cog. I'll take any questions, if y'all got any questions or anything about this.
Yeah, well, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Hugh Banks, I have no problem with your recommendation. And I think I've addressed this with Mr. Johnson for the water flow. Now, is he gonna be, is this gonna be contained on his property?
Yes, sir. He, he, I just caught, I saw one set of his plans, where he's got retaining ponds and everything within the property.
Okay.
That's another reason I want them to, stipulation to be that they work with PD Cog, to make sure...
If Sandy's on board, it'd be done correctly.
Right, Sandy will assure that, you know, we've got all the deh...
Easy to work with.
...permits, everything that's required, that this will be taken care of.
I have no problem with it.
Mr. Miller, you want to put that in a form of a motion, including the stipulations to work with PD Cog?
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second? Ethan, second. Any other discussion?
Thank you for investing in Chesterfield County.
There's no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Item twelve, Mr. Ford?
Thank you. What I wanted to bring, bring before counsel is, I think that the committee meetings, one thing I've realized by being on counsel, that the committee meetings are where the majority of the communication, the dialogue, when it comes to issues that council's facing, and things that the, that we have to take into consideration as it, as it goes to parts of the people's business, per se. So with that being said, I would like to see council take a vote on having the committee meetings recorded and have them posted on the website the same way that the regular council meetings are. That way we can, that way when we have issues, you know, we can show the people that, you know, hey, that we're, we're working diligently to try to solve the problems the best way that we know how. I think it's very important, in my opinion, to, to show our constituents that we're transparent, that, you know, we want everybody to know exactly what's going on because at the end of the day, we were all paid to take care of the people's, the people's business on behalf of them. And so I think this would be a great step in that direction. And, you know, I, just in a similar manner to the way we do it now, the, the committee meetings, even on the state and federal levels, they're all posted in a similar fashion. So this is not something that we would be doing differently than anybody else, in my opinion. So I, I make a motion that we, that we video and audio record the committee meetings and have them posted. You know, it couldn't be executive session, obviously, but I'd like to, I'd like to see the committee meetings recorded and video and audio, and have them posted on the website along with our regular council meetings.
Okay, you, we've heard the motion, is there a second?
I'll second. But not because I, I, I just want to investigate it a little bit further. Not that I'm, I talked to Mr. Ford before this, and, and I just don't know that I'm seconding, saying I'm in favor of it. I just want to discuss it a little bit more. So what would that do? Because we already have it on audio, right?
We've got it on audio, correct.
Okay, so what about, so with video, what's the difference? I mean, I know what the difference is, I also have the video, but I had, I had mentioned this to Tim, you know, theoretically, I don't have a problem with it at all. But what would that do with us, like personnel-wise? Is that gonna be problematic?
Now, just like this meeting being recorded now, Cody with IT is literally sitting back, recording everything in video, and you got two cameras, he's switching back and forth. I don't know if y'all seen the, his display back there, but it's, it's pretty neat. And it's something that IT would have to, you know, continue to operate. And just pointing out, since this year, the three months that we've had so far, we've had fifteen committee meetings so far. If those being recorded or videoed, IT is one person and a part-time person. That, their plate is loaded. I'm telling you, I feel bad to ask Cody to do anything. I can't even offer him additional monies for additional job schools. There comes a point that money doesn't fix it because he's, his plate's loaded. I would probably be asking for an additional manpower to perform this duty. Just, I'm just telling you like it is.
Would, would we have to have additional manpower? Because in the majority of all the committee meetings, there's no reason to switch back and forth because there's nobody at the podium.
But he's still got to be at that console back there. And he can, he can tell you better than I can. It's something that with IT, I'm not an IT person, but we don't have any, just any and everybody that I would sit back there to operate it. And y'all, more than welcome to look at it and see his display back there because it's, it's really neat. And you're right, I mean, you would have it just said on one thing, but he still has to be there. And just like doing an executive session, you got to go, he's got to get us back on when we come back. So we're in communication with him the whole time. And IT is just one department that is really strapped right now.
Yeah, this is, this is just my personal opinion. I mean, when it, when it comes down to transparency, I know everybody says, you know, tired of hearing about transparency, but at the end of the day, whatever it takes to, to let the public know exactly what we have going on, I mean, I think it's, I think it's very, very important. I mean, I don't, I understand it's gonna be, you know, it, it may, could be a hindrance on IT or whatever, and we might have to look at whatever we have to do. But, I mean, this is a part of our job. It's, you know, we, we can't, we can't be worried about a camera. We can't hide behind anything else. I think we really need to look forward and say, you know what? If we're gonna have to make decisions, you know, the people need to know what we're making decisions about. They need to know the conversations that we're having.
But the recordings are on there, right?
No.
Yeah, we record committee meetings.
Okay.
I mean, voice.
Are they posted?
They're not audio, I mean...
They're not.
Are they posted?
The committee meeting... The audio is not posted. You can request it.
But they're open to the public if they want to.
Yeah, because I agree, I mean, I don't have a problem with that at all. But, I mean, if it's the video, if they're, if we already have them available, audio-wise, then having an extra person for the video, you know, I can see that that would be hard, but...
Well, could, could we, could we get to a point where we say, okay, if we're not gonna have the video, but we're gonna have the audio, could we go, could we move forward with a motion that we put the audio of all the meetings, or public meetings? Can we put the audio? We already have it, we're using it for the minutes, it's a public meeting. I mean, this, this is a no-brainer.
She said Cody would have to...
Yeah, I mean, I could give the recordings to Cody if you choose to do that, and then he would put it on there.
Yeah, because, I mean, we're already using the recordings for the minutes. So everything's subject to FOIA. I mean, this, this is just a step showing the public that, hey, we, we want y'all to be able to see exactly, or hear exactly what we, what we're having to deal with. Because, I mean, if we, if we talk about raising taxes, we shouldn't have to, you know, explain it a thousand times. At the end of the day, you know, hey, this is what we're up against. This is why things have to happen. Instead of just coming out here in a regular council meeting and saying, well, this is what our decision was, but we don't want y'all to hear our conversation.
Well, the conversations are already recorded, they're just not being posted.
Correct, correct. So, I mean, it's, it's, I, so I guess I changed my motion. My motion is to, listen, can we move forward? I make a motion that we ask IT to post the audio recordings that we already have on the same platform, YouTube, our, our county page, for the public to, to be able to listen to if they choose so.
Okay, he has changed his motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is any further discussion?
How much, you were talking about IT and the workload that they have. How much would this add to his workload or their workload?
I don't think that, because literally, correct me if I'm wrong, Suzie, you're, you're controlling the recordings right here. She's controlling the recordings. Just putting that on the internet would be the only thing. I don't think that would be that big a deal.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed?
No.
So how many we got opposed? One, two, three, four?
If it's already available, why, why we need to do this?
Right. If it's al, what you mean, if it's already available?
The recording's already available.
So, so you saying that the public should have to call up here and ask for it?
No, 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 they can come by, that's what they can do. Or get on the internet and listen to it.
It's not on the internet, that's what we're saying.
That's what we just voted on, to put it on the internet.
This is the committee meetings, not the regular council meetings.
That's what I'm referring to, the committee meetings.
They're not on, they're not online.
Is there a problem with getting them online? Tell me it's, it's available.
It's, it's, that's what, that's what we're, that's, that's what I'm, I'm making a motion to make it available. Because it's not, right now, it's not on, the committee meetings are being recorded, but they're not being posted online like the regular council meeting is.
I'm certainly not opposed to them being available to the public anytime they want to.
But that's what we're voting on.
Correct.
Oh, yes.
Okay, we're at the point where the motion has failed. If you want to bring it back up with further discussion, but as of right now, the vote has failed. Okay, we'll move down to item ten, bid award for the Taylor Loop Road. Ms. Stanley?
Yes, sir, we sent out bids for, to pay the Taylor Loop Road and the CTC monies. And we received two bids back, Cherokee for seven-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars, and then Lineburger for one million, one-eighty-eight, three-eighty-eight, sixty-five. So we like, made recommendation to council to accept and approve the bid for Cherokee.
What did you say the name of the company was again?
Cherokee.
Cherokee.
Yes, sir.
Have we worked with them before?
Yes.
Okay, you've heard this presented by Ms. Stanley, to present this award to Cherokee. Is there a motion to accept that?
I'll make the motion to accept the bid.
Okay, Mr. Curtis, Mr. Miller, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Miller, I know those folks appreciate it.
Okay, move down to bid award for the Thistle Down Lane.
Yes, sir. Okay, we also sent out bids for Thistle Down Lane, and we received two back for that also. Fur Grading was two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-six-sixty-two-fifty, and Sea Ray Miles Construction for four-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-four-twenty. Yeah, that's a big difference. We sent a recommendation to council to accept and approve the base bid to Fur Grading. And we've worked with them also. Yes, sir.
They'll come to the county. Whose district is that in? Any of my bids? It really doesn't matter.
Bridlewood, Bridlewood, who would that be?
Todd, is it, that's Todd.
You might want to make the motion. I believe I would.
Mr. Smallwood is making the motion, and Ms. Anderson is gonna say it.
I didn't think you knew that, but I was just about to say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
It's always nice to keep the money local. Fur does a good job.
Okay, item number thirteen C, Ms. Stanley?
Okay, we have some surplus property that the sheriff has asked to be declared as surplus, and it's actually three different vehicles. And once again, once they're surplus and sold on gov deals, they'll put that money back into the fund. And what they're doing, they'll be coming to us for more, and they're gonna try to get the money together to purchase a vehicle.
Need a motion to declare these items as surplus? Ms. Burns, Mr. Smallwood, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I got a question for the sheriff, if I may.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Got a question for the sheriff, if I may. Thank you. Sheriff, the transaction between your, your, your department and Darland...
transaction between your, your, your department and Darlington with the used vehicles, did that come to fruition? It did. Okay. And that helped you tremendously.
We bought six used vehicles from Darlington County. We updated them ourselves. We did all the work, saved a lot of money and they're on the road now.
Okay. That'd be fine. And, uh, did we settle with the insurance company on the two thousand nineteen that got wrecked?
Yeah, that's actually how they were able to purchase that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've also, um, instead of buying, just buying new cars, you know, as we get money. We have, we have been buying cars with that surplus. Well, a couple of that surplus, either the money from the wreck we get or the shirt money from all. So we're not the point of buying new cars. We, we're doing the best we can to stretch the dollar. Keep the new cars on the, for the car. We just bought one with eighty, eighty-one thousand miles and one with a hundred and eleven thousand miles. They should not work right now. Obviously, we love that new car.
That's about half the mileage that you're running now.
We could buy two, we could buy one new car.
Exactly.
We're trying to expect money in that.
Thank you for that information. We appreciate that. Appreciate what y'all doing. Okay, Lynch's River Industrial Park, a protective covenant variance. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Ruffner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a grant of variances to the Declaration of Protective Covenants that are in place at Lynch's River Industrial Park. When those covenants were initially done, the, they were very generic. Uh, they include a lot of provisions, uh, that, that may at some point need to be changed. And for that reason, the covenants provide that council can provide waivers and variances to the requirements. The particular variances that are being requested for this project are listed in the grant of variances. Uh, one is to, uh, exceed the height restriction of forty-five feet, but not to go above fifty feet. The other, there are some overhead utility lines already on the property. Also, loading docks and parking areas would not have to be concealed from view of primary streets. Uh, I would just note that this is right close to Walmart distribution center that has numerous loading docks present. So I don't think that is any, uh, anything that's gonna be unsightly, anything that's different is already there. And then there's also a soil stockpile that we are working with the industry, uh, to use that soil stockpile for other areas in the, uh, industrial park that'll benefit the county from having to purchase that, uh, that dirt uh, to use for those purposes. Uh, so that just allows that stockpile to remain on the property for the time being uh, as Tim and Jeff and the road department, uh, work in the future to move that to other places. So be my recommendation that, that the council approve this grant of variances for this project.
Okay, you've heard the information from Mr. Ruffner. Is there a motion to approve this variance?
There's one, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rivers, Mr. Miller, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, at this time, Ms. Cherry McCoy is gonna come up with some of her associates and.
Every day and then I, uh, I like to, uh, we, uh, we hear bad stuff all the time. Something came across my, my laptop, uh, a couple of months ago that I saw that I thought was just really, really interesting. John Douglas actually had that on his, his sleeve. I guess I was trying to find out the variance.
Good timing.
But we really, we led the pack in growth of the village over the last ten years. We were number one of all rural counties. And we actually exceeded, uh, Kershaw, Florence, Richland, Georgetown, Beaufort and Sunkin. So we had more growth in our value of our village than any of, of those counties. And, uh, it, I just thought that was something outstanding. While I was thinking about it, I, I, you know, I was trying to think of what. And I, I thought back to something that you guys did. And that was maybe not ten years ago, but some kind of within that ten years, you decided to start a capital plan by using a small portion of, of, uh, the new fees to fund economic development, to help with these things that we needed to do. We would have a project sometime that could locate, but Tim would have to find money to finish the road back. We, we now can do those kind of things without disrupting your budget. And, uh, that I think has been the single mode of supportive thing that has, has helped us to see this growth. Cause the biggest part of this growth, I feel like, has been in industrial. Yes, we've had houses, but we've not had that many in, uh, in houses. So, um, vision that was before you and that y'all are continuing to have has, uh, has profited this county. And what happens when you see this is when your, your village value rises, then your, your number of meals doesn't have to raise as quickly. So you're saving all these folks money and, uh, by limiting having to go up on meals because you're increasing the money. But I just thought that, that, you know, I won't be here much longer, but I did want to tell you that I, I felt like that's a really good job and has contributed a lot to economic development. So thank you.
Well, we'd like to thank you for all you have done and hopefully you will continue to do along with the, the rest of the economic development staff. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think, uh, if I remember correctly, that was the brainchild of Mr. Ruffner. And I certainly appreciate that and he needs to have kudos for that himself.
Thank you, sir.
Anything, uh, this finance question? I heard what Ms. McCoy said, but Ms. Stanley's not saying the same thing at the finance committee meeting. There is no money.
Well, with expenses, what up to you?
I'm not calling you a storyteller because I know you're conservative, but I appreciate what you do.
Okay, we'll move down to, um, item fifteen, local workforce development area designation. Uh, Mr. Ruffner?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this permits, uh, and authorizes the PD, uh, COG Workforce Investment, uh, Agency to continue to serve and, uh, administer grants. As we, most of you probably know, Workforce Investment Opportunity Act changed what used to be called the Unemployment Office, uh, to this. And PD COG has administered that since that change was made. And, and as far as I know, it's done a good job. Uh, this is fairly timely, given what has happened with the Stanley Plant. Uh, and this is the agency that some of those displaced employees will work through and work with uh, to be placed, uh, in hopefully jobs in the future.
Okay. We need a motion to approve this designation petition.
So moved.
Ms. Anderson?
A second.
Mr. Curtis? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we move down to item fifteen B, the Windsor Park Sewer Service. And I'll begin to turn this over to Mr. Ruffner.
Thank you, sir. Uh, as you, hopefully read in your memo, we have enclosed an ordinance that was done back in nineteen seventy-eight. So I don't think I can even blame any of the current members for doing this. But, but that ordinance created what is a unique animal in Chesterfield County, and that is the Windsor Park, uh, Sewer Service. It is a sewer service that is outside of the town of Sheraw, uh, but is serviced by the town of Sheraw, by being paid from the county. Uh, funds for that are collected, uh, through billing those, uh, individuals. And I believe it's around a hundred and twenty some odd or a hundred and thirty some odd property owners. Uh, the problem with that is that those, those folks are billed, they bring the payments here to the council office. And if those are, fees are not paid, then the county is limited in the way they can collect those. Is the, essentially limited to what's known as the Set Off Debt Collection Program, which many of you are probably familiar with, which permits the county to file with the Department of Revenue. If someone files income tax return, is entitled to a refund, the money's taken from that refund. Well, someone either doesn't file tax return because they don't make enough, or they just don't file one. Or if they're not getting a refund, that's not, uh, any good. Obviously, the majority of the residents out there do pay. The problem is for those that don't pay, uh, those funds have to be made up from the general fund of the county. Uh, in other words, the, the bill for administering the, and taking care of this, uh, sewer system is the same as, as every year. I mean, it's determined and the county has to pay that to the town of Sheraw. So if we are short on collections, then that is made up from the general fund. So essentially, the other taxpayers in the county are making up the difference for those in this area that don't pay. So, uh, you can see in the ordinance, uh, I think it's clear, and, and I have spoken with the treasurer about this, that this was intended to be collected, uh, on that volume tax bill. Uh, that, that's clear from the language of the ordinance. For whatever reason, it was either never done or was done and then was stopped. So, uh, our recommendation would be that we go back to, for the upcoming year, two thousand twenty-three, including that charge on the tax bill. That would only be prospective. We would not go back and include any delinquent amounts on the tax bill. That would just be going forward. And if council did decide to do this, we would very shortly get a letter out to every property owner that's affected, notifying them of this change.
Okay, and the county will continue to try to collect the past due bills?
Yes. And there, I think, uh, Ms. Stanley, that currently stands at a total of around how much? About twenty thousand dollars in past due that's uncollected. Uh, and the charge is six hundred dollars per year per parcel. So, uh, and in the past has been less than that. So you start doing the math, uh, you know, that's a pretty sizable amount.
Mr. Ruffner, would you add it on the tax bill? That's, would that also expose them to property being so?
Correct. That, that would be the, that would be the, the, uh, the effect of it. It's on the tax bill. Uh, there's a statute that's been in place now for, for a number of years that if it's on the tax bill, the treasurer can't issue a paid receipt unless everything on that tax bill is paid. So this would be able to be collected through the delinquent tax sale process. And I suspect what would, the result of that would be that, that some that are not paying now are going to start paying.
They gonna start paying. I'll agree. Uh, that's been a thorn in our side as long as I can remember. Uh, with maintenance and collections and everything else. And, uh, I have no problem with that. Whose district is that in? Is that?
Between me and Rhett. We, we kind of split some of that. It's mostly Rhett.
So we need a motion to authorize, um, these bills to be placed on a tax notice.
So moved.
Ms. Anderson? Ms. Burns, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Um, move down to item sixteen, board appointments, Alligator Fire District Board Appointment, Mr. Ruffner?
Yes, sir. Uh, enclosed in your packet is a copy of the minutes. Uh, the highlighted portion being that the, uh, Alligator Fire District Board has recommended that Mike Tiller be appointed to their board, uh, to, uh, replace a member who is, is no longer on the board. Uh, and that would require a vote of council to do that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this appointment?
Of who?
Ms. Smallwood and Mr. Curtis, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, move down to item sixteen B, Planning Commissioners, Chesterfield County Joint Plan. We'll turn that over to Mr. Eubanks.
Okay, I s- uh, we sent y'all out a list of all the one, all the names that we had to, that had an interest on being on the planning commission. And it's a pretty lengthy list. So what I did to try to narrow it down some is try to pick throughout the county from the western end to the southern end, to the middle, to the eastern end, some of the ones that are throughout. I, these are only, this is only a recommendation from me. The names that I give or would offer to y'all that would pinpoint certain people throughout the county is a Dennis Rivers on the eastern end, Lee Wallace in the middle, Jermaine Johnson on the western end, and John Martin in the southern end. This is just a starting point. That's my recommendation to y'all. And y'all can take that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make.
Motion to accept that recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this late.
A second. For the second? Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Eubanks, for thinking through that.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Accommodations Tax Committee, Ms. Stanley?
Yes, sir. We have two members that we need to update on our accommodation tax committee members. And just to make sure everybody knows what the accommodation tax committee is, is composed of different members where they gather together and go over, review the grants that is submitted for the accommodation tax money they sent from the state. Because there are certain guidelines that you have to meet, um, and it's the different towns and entities that they have to meet to be able to use this accommodation tax money. So we've got two members that needs to be updated. Um, of course, Ms. Cherry McCoy. We would like to recommend Libby Lear to take her place. And then also Mr. Seth Morris, which was a hotel industry, to request Ms. Leah. And Libby May can help me on pronouncing her name. Is it Rajay? She's the new hotel? Okay, okay. That's okay. But she's, we would like to recommend a replace, um, Mr. Seth Morris.
Okay, y'all have heard that recommendation? Is there a motion to accept those? Ms. Burns, Ms. Smallwood, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, administrator's report, Mr. Eubanks?
Got one thing. Uh, we need to congratulate Ms. Burns on receiving the PD Regional Transportation Rural Board Member of the Year.
All right. Grandmom of the year.
But that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eubanks. Uh, any council members got any comments?
I have a couple.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you to Economic Development Office for hosting the round table last week. Um, they had existing industry. They had some folks from Department of Commerce. And I thought it was a great way to kick off, um, you know, having something different and offering opportunities to get together. So thank you for doing that. And then, um, just out of transparency, because I have had a couple of people ask, when we're doing section ten of our agenda and you see like, um, title only or first reading, just so the public knows, in case anybody watches the video, we have to have three readings. So a lot of times it might look like we're passing through pretty quickly, but it is because some of that work has been done in committees and we're getting to the end. But we have to have the readings prior to. So don't feel like we're making rushed decisions, you know, or we're voting on a budget. You know, flippantly, we, we have these title only and we're getting there because we have to have three readings. I just thought that was important for our public to understand.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, um, I think that, uh, we need to say we appreciate, I know Jermaine's here, the folks that are, that have asked to put their time and effort into that, um, that group that's gonna help us try to come up with a plan. Uh, it's, it's gonna take a lot of time, a lot of effort away from what they do. So I think this, this, this one here might be a little bit different than some of the other committees and things that we have. And also, uh, I think, I think it is deserving to say this, that, you know, we, we just voted on it. And I'm not salty because my idea, it can go through. But I think this is exactly the reason why that we, we got a video and all. But I think this is exactly the reason why that we, we got a video and audio recording for a regular council meeting. Because now, those of you who chose to vote against being transparent, maybe the constituents and everyone else can get behind this and say, you know, what, what is the reason why you don't want to be transparent? So, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a pledge to the community that since people have decided not to use the equipment that the people have paid for with their tax dollars, to do something so simple is to show the community what we're up against, that I'm gonna personally start video and audio recording the committee meetings, every one of them. And I'll have it on a platform that's gonna be available. And y'all can answer to y'all's constituents for whatever decisions that y'all made. Thank you.
I'd just like to announce that, and this was announced from the South Carolina Fire Association, Rural Fire Association, but we had two fire departments that were recognized and congratulated for the 2022 Fire Safe South Carolina Communities. One was the Sheraw Fire Department, and the other was Cass Rural Fire Department. So congratulations to those two.
Great, thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else have anything? Not, there is a need to go into executive session. And Mr. Ruffner, will you explain that part?
Yes, sir. Have two items, or two reasons. One is under subsection 30 dash 4 dash 70, subsection A5. That is for discussion of matters relating to proposed location, expansion of provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses within the county. Those two items are the Carolina Center Industrial Park, specifically HS Growers, and then also the Lynch's River Industrial Park. And that would be regarding infrastructure development. Under item 19B is subsection 30 dash 4 dash 70A2. And that is for discussion of negotiations to propose contractual arrangements, also proposed sale or purchase of property, and receipt of legal advice. That would be subject to attorney-client privileges, privilege. And those items are contractual negotiations with the town of Mackbee concerning National Crime Information Center, better known as NCIC, checks and warrant services, contractual negotiations with the town of Mackbee concerning building code enforcement services, contractual negotiations with the town of Mackbee concerning a pilot feline spay and neuter program, the sale of the Leopard Building, and the sale of property to High Point Fire Department. And I would note, as, as stated on the agenda, that council may take action on some or all of those items after exiting executive session.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I'll second that with a 10-minute break.
I will get to that in just a second. Second by Mr. Curtis, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, and we will take a 10-minute break.
Thank you.
We're now back in regular session. While we in executive session, the motions were made and the votes were taken. So I think we need a motion to um enter into negotiations with the town that might be concerning the building codes enforcement.
Correct.
Is that correct where you need to?
Yes, that's right.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion? Is there a move? Mr. Curtis, Mr. Ford, any discussion?
This this has been uh.
This has been discussed with Derek. And he is good with it. Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Need a motion for the Mackbee's pilot ferrocut spay and neuter program and getting an agreement with them. Is that...
Yes, sir.
Chairman Butler, I make a motion that we have our staff create a template agreement to use with the town of Mackbee in regards to the spay and neuter pilot program.
I mean out there. Okay, Ms. Anderson and Mr. Curtis, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're down to...
Need to go back to 1982.
Mr. Butler, I make a motion that we move forward with phase two of the master plan for the Lynch's River Industrial Park.
Thank you very much. Mr. Burns is second. All in favor? Any discussion first? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it. Now, we're going to get down to the sale of the Leopard Building. We're going to authorize Mr. Eubanks to enter into discussion with the town of Chestfield to see if they're interested in what their proposal is. Is that correct?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Mr. Smallwood second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The sale of the High Point Fire Department. How we gonna handle that?
We don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion on that, okay? We don't need a motion on that.
That take three reasons public here.
Okay. Now, anything else?
That's all I can think of, Mr. Chair.
If nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. No move. All in favor? Don't forget there's lunch.
I'm ready for it, too.
Over at the county shop.